Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, August 30th, 2021 at 6:30. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what it stands, one nation, and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask everyone to stay standing for a moment of silence for the families involved in the atrocities over in Afghanistan. Madam Clerk, if we're right in, I'm sorry. Anyone here for open forum? Okay. Open forum will close. Madam Chair, if you'll go right into our action items since our appointment's not until 7:30 or thereabouts.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 9th, 2021, 7 o'clock PM Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to extend the interim town administrator contract until September 30th, 2021.
Second.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I thought that was November 30th?
Yeah. I received negative feedback on, from the interim town administrator on that one.
Well, you weren't supposed to talk to him about it. If he had a glenbite, he wouldn't have even known.
Mr. Chairman, conventionally speaking, one engages in bilateral talks on contracts. I assure you, I'm in trilateral negotiations with my lovely bride. We're talking thirty years.
Why are we bothering?
He's been here long enough that she misses him, so she wants him back.
Who can say that?
Not Dave.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We appreciate you staying with us, Jim. You've done a phenomenal job considering what has happened since you brought your bad luck with you. We do appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, that said, I think thus far the interim stint has had some successes. And just by way of segueing perhaps into items four, five, and six on tonight's agenda, I don't have to tell you, but you know, the public should know what a good core group you've got here in terms of department heads and in their support staff as well. So success was, you know, has virtually been assured because of that. And that's really no baloney. And because this is probably her, well, I'm sure, her last Selectmen's meeting, in the beginning, things were a bit tough. You know, I came in under circumstances where there was a separation in a town meeting immediately ahead of us. And I needed help. And I got it from the finance team and most especially from Melissa. In those times when we were trying to firm up our revenues and our approach to town meeting, those were very, very important times in very important deliberations, and she was a huge help to me there. So for my small sampling of her work experience here in East Bridgewater, I'd just like to say good job and thank you, Melissa.
I'd like to echo that and wish you very well in your next endeavor. I don't know how you're gonna do that drive every day, but good luck. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to submit a request for designation of a special municipal employee status for the administrative assistant to the Conservation Commission position.
Second.
Any discussion? Claire?
No, it's just, as you know, Kim Eldridge has left as of last Friday. She is, has taken a job with the school system, but she's willing to spend some of the off time helping us out until we have a replacement. The job replacement will be in full agent position. So that's the, so she'll be working for us, but also for the school system too.
Thank you. That's a good move.
And counsel advise, Mr. Chairman, that either or both of the positions that Kim is engaged in have this special municipal employee designation.
Okay. Great. Anything else?
No, I guess the only question I have for Claire is how is the applicants? Do we, what is the process? I know you were gonna talk to the commissioner.
I did, I did tonight. They sent, Lee and Rebecca sent all the applications that closed yesterday. We've got all the resumes sent over to each one of the members. We're going to, I'm gonna host a meeting for next Tuesday night so the commission members can get together and take and go through all of them. We probably have at least forty or more.
Oh, wow.
We'll go through and go down to however many good applicants, at least three could be, a little bit more. I haven't had a chance to go through them all. And then we'll hopefully the following week set up interviews with the top ones, so we'll have a decision fairly quickly, within the next couple of weeks definitely.
Good. Fantastic.
And Jim's been great, you know, helping. So we'll, our final interviews we'll do on a night when Jim is available. And so he's there with us as we go through that final process.
Good. Good. Again, thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion that we appoint interim treasurer-collector Marilyn Thompson and execute a contract for her.
Second.
Discussion. Marilyn?
Hi.
Hi.
Just wanna welcome you back.
Thank you.
It's just a place you just can't leave forever.
I know.
You just have to keep coming back. We're looking forward to you getting right on, right here, jumping right in. We know you have the experience. I think you know most of the department heads from your prior, so it's a new board, you'll have to, you know, tolerate these two. But do you have anything you wanna add?
Not, not really. I just, I mean, I've been doing this for a long time.
Yes.
Just recently retired last October, so it's still fresh in my mind.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for the, for public consumption, we all know Marilyn's background, but Marilyn was the treasurer-collector for the town of East Bridgewater for a number of years until 2013?
2013, yes.
And then she went to Walpole to become its finance director slash treasurer-collector and retired 11 months ago and is board silly enough to say yes to us in her retirement? So we're very lucky, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome back.
Welcome back.
Thanks, Marilyn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did Marilyn sign yours?
I think Lee has contracts for you to sign too, Marilyn.
I won't sign ours afterwards.
Okay. Do you want me to continue? I make a motion that we appoint Patricia Black as principal clerk in the treasurer-collector's office effective August 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? Jim, you wanna give us a little background on this?
Melissa? Do you mind?
Melissa?
And you thought you would not go straight through.
Patricia comes with a long banking background.
She started, she worked her way through banking up into loan servicing. She's very familiar with the tax side already of our world because she handled all the mortgage taxes for her residents. She's also a resident of East Bridgewater. She has two children in the school department. She's very excited to be here. She's gonna be great. I mean, she's very smart and she's already picking up everything and it's only been half a day. So she's, you're gonna love her.
Anything else, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Patricia.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Candy Boyle as senior clerk in the Planning and Building Department effective September 13th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? Jim?
Pat?
Pat?
Pat? You wanna say something about Candy's transfer upstairs?
Sure, we're looking forward to it. It's pretty busy and we're falling a little bit behind and I think it's gonna work out great. The process was made real easy by Candy. She's perfect for the job, really. And she's gonna fit in great. I just, like I said, I'm really looking forward to her getting started.
Okay, good. Mr. Chairman, the conventional recruitment process was followed here in interviews where, who conducted the interviews, Pat, besides yourself, leading up to the selection?
Myself, Alan McKenzie, and Roy Gardner.
Okay. Good.
Don't move.
Okay. Yeah. Stay quiet. All right. Any further?
Yes, quick question. So is Dottie Simpson, will she remain with the zoning or how's that?
With, yes, for zoning for now. So she's staying on for, at least for a couple of weeks while Candy transitions in for a little bit of help, a slight bit of training. There's not gonna be a lot of training needed because the scope of the job is gonna be quite a bit different than what, from what Dottie was doing. We're gonna kinda reorganize the office a little bit, change it around a little bit. As far as the zoning board of appeals goes, she's staying on with that as the assistant for the zoning board and just for them. I think that's five hours a week and on the nights that they have a meeting.
Thanks.
Okay, good. Carol, anything?
Nope. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter contract signing with building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer Patrick Frainey.
Second.
Welcome back. Of course, you never left, but welcome back. It's, again, one of these contracts that I'm sure Jim won't jump in any minute now. We have a different way of setting up contracts for department heads, but we have goals, we have things like that, and more responsibility and basically have you tell us exactly what has to be done up there and what we can do to move it along, but you're the final say it's what you're doing and, you know, we'll set the goals, you know, shall we, after we get through here? And we'll do, you know, monthly quarterly reports, stuff like that, so we can make sure that everything gets along smoothly. Good. Jim?
You covered it, Mr. Chairman. And after that slapdown, I don't dare say anything, so.
Yes, Carol?
I'm glad that we are at this point.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Patrick Frainey as the building commissioner zoning enforcement officer effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Patrick Frainey to the federal handicapped compliance program effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Kathleen Kavanaugh as a permanent member to the Council on Aging Board to fill a vacancy effective August 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? Katie brings a lot of, you know, prior work experience. She was working down at the Council on Aging prior to her joining the town clerk's office, so she'll be a great asset to that position.
Agreed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we call a special town meeting for November 22nd, 2021, and that we open the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yay.
Make sure that gets recorded as yay. Any further discussion besides yay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve to instruct animal control officer Alexis Xavier to issue noncriminal violations to dog owners who have not licensed their dogs as of September 20th, 2021.
Second.
Madam Clerk, you wanna at least give us the numbers? You don't have to come up front.
As of 6:30, we still have 446 dogs unlicensed, but we are well over 2,000 at this point, so we're doing pretty good.
Good.
But not good enough. We've been making some calls and...
That's 85 percent nothing.
Yeah, I mean, it's not bad, but...
Drive around with them. Today's world, that would be construed as harassment. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the sewer allocation request for 225 and 241 Bedford Street with the condition being a sewer manhole be shown on the plan and constructed an approximate location of where the applicant's sewer line connects to the town's sewer stub.
Second.
Discussion.
John, you wanna?
Mr. Haynes?
Could we be made ready to come up and chat?
Right.
Yeah, so the, so this is essentially the connection for Carriage Crossing to our municipal sewer district that was established approximately five years ago. This is essentially, it's the capstone facility. It will, they are applying for approximately 9,200 gallons of daily flow, an allocation of. So with that amount, we felt it was in the best interest of the town to utilize the firm of Weston and Sampson who worked with us extensively on sewer design, capacity, flows, systems and such, and expansion. Just to assure, to think first, obviously, that the connection and design was appropriate as specified per rules and regs, but also we wanted to make sure that, you know, this is almost 50% of the total capacity allocation. We wanted to make sure that we weren't, didn't miss something in that review. And they assured us we will, after approval of this, you know, allocation application, we'll be at 22,000 gallons per day flow and our total capacity's 30,000 gallons. So we're still well within range for maximum daily flow at the, per our permit for the plant. And again, it's what we're proposing, we're recommending the advisory group is a conditional approval based on the plans reflecting in the construction of a actual sewer manhole at the point of connection between the private connection and our municipal sewer stub. We don't always require that, but due to the amount of flow that potentially could be coming out of that facility, we felt it required it so that we didn't end up either on the private side or on the municipal side particularly with any kind of blockage development or things like that. So for ease of maintenance, it's a relatively small design change and construction change at this point. Felt it was entirely appropriate to ask for that and before final connection is made, we'll make sure that that's in place.
It's, it's great because we've been talking about that since before we had the water treatment land.
Correct. Correct.
Finally, it's here.
As we've talked about extensively here, what the downtown sewer district now will provide for opportunity because from the owners of the Carriage Crossing facility and conversations with them, this gives them a number of avenues now that they can pursue that they didn't, they were really restricted previously. So, you know, again, five, 10, 15 years from now, that tie card could look significantly different than it does today.
Great.
To add on to John's point, so this all started, like John said, probably even longer ago, seven years ago on, I don't know if you remember, spin bikes. Me and you sitting on a spin bike together. I don't know what we were doing on spin bikes, but we were sitting on the minis. And I just wanna thank John.
You have any pictures of that?
Yeah, we may, we may. I may be able to dig that up.
Be something like.
We, so along with John, there's numerous people. David sat on the board and originally wrote up the rules and regs for this, for this sewer district. This brings in four now, John, I believe, partners, along with CVS and Dewhurst and Subway and now Carriage Crossing. But, you know, Paula's in the, in the room. She, she was a big part of it. We had Bob Philbrook, a former health agent. He was a big part of this as well. So everybody that sat on that board, as well as the people that, from Weston and Sampson and whatnot, it's, you know, it's funny, we were told from the beginning that this, this was kind of a dream. It wouldn't happen. There's no way, you know, and here we are, some years later, but that's municipal government, they tell me, right?
He's learning.
Some, some.
Can we have a quote on that?
But again, it's, you know, it's like, like John said, I'd like, I can't wait to see what in three to five years brings in that, in that quarter now that we have the ability to see those business owners vamp up that area. It's a small area, but it's a, it's a start, especially when we don't have sewer in town. And it only shows us what the potential advantages of the newest district over there under 18 could bring to the table with our connection with Brockton. Good job, John, as always, and everybody else that was involved.
And the only thing, you know, I'll say, it also, I think as Peter said, you know, when we moved this project at town meeting floor, just this, this final connection essentially more than just covers the cost of the, the total project cost. So now everything on top of this will be growth, which, you know, any initiatives, any new development, anything like that, is all growth to the town. So this actually, you know, we will, we have more than recouped the capital investment to do this at this point already.
That's great.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to John or Pete, do we have additional capacity beyond the 30,000 that we're permitted for, that we can, we can expand another 30?
We do, we do.
And are there any immediate plans or intermediate plans to develop that additional capacity?
The phrase I always use is the, the projects pull the pipe. So as the projects come, we will figure out, you know, that, but...
It took me a second, but I got it. Okay.
So the, when the plant was constructed in, as part of the high school building project, we recognized the opportunity that it presented and the facility, the, the structure and the mechan, and the tankage and the storage allows for the total capacity as well as the discharge of 60,000 gallons per day. Right now, we currently have, we're utilizing up to 30,000 with the, the actual treatment process and things like that. But everything is in place with the addition of literally another skid of mechanisms to actually process that we could upgrade the plant to 60,000 gallons a day within our permit application and things like that. So there's, there's additional growth for things to come.
That's great.
There's a number of large tracts of land still that are open on, on Route 18 that would allow more growth within the district. And there's some other individuals we've had conversations with outside of the district but that have some really exciting potential projects that could utilize that, that additional flow. So I think the town would be really receptive to.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything?
Nothing for me.
It's great because I think that was the, the third sewer commission board I was on. Two of them were upstairs and one that, it's just great. See, it's, it only took 22 years.
That's quick.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John.
You.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Month.
Second.
Madam Chair, you wouldn't mind reading that, please? Very important, especially some of the statistics they have in there.
Sure. Says National Suicide Prevention Month, September 21st, proclamation for the town of East Bridgewater. Whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of all deaths in the U.S. and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 15 to 24, whereas in the U.S. one person completes suicide every 14 minutes. Whereas it is estimated that 5 million people in the U.S. are survivors of suicide loss. Whereas an increase in the overall suicide rate in our country was seen in 2019, representing a change in the recent pattern of stability or slight declines. Whereas suicide is a community problem and thus there must be a community response through various initiatives to reduce suicidal behaviors. Whereas the Plymouth Suicide Prevention Coalition, which is dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths through education, awareness, and action, urge that we as a community, one, recognize suicide as a national, state, and public health problem and declare suicide prevention to be a Plymouth County priority; two, acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities; three, encourage local initiatives based on the goals contained in the national strategy, strategy for suicide prevention that will, A, develop and implement strategies to reduce the stigma associated with being a consumer of mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services; B, develop and implement community-based suicide prevention programs and suicide bereavement support services; C, implement training for the recognition of at-risk behavior and for the delivery of the effective treatment; D, increase access to and community linkages with mental health and substance abuse in the entertainment and news media. Whereas a great many suicides are preventable, therefore it be resolved that we, the East Bridgewater Board of Selectmen, do hereby designate September 10th, 2021, which overlaps World Suicide Prevention Day on September 10th, as National Suicide Prevention Month in the town of East Bridgewater, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Discussions? And I, I think it's very important, those statistics are shocking to me. And I think everyone, if you know someone that is having a problem, you know, just contact, contact Suicide Prevention and see what help you can get from that.
And I think too, you know, as you all know, it touched my family recently, and I think that it's so important that we are there to support families that this happens too, because it's, sometimes you just never see it coming, and certainly no one in my family did. So I think it's just really important that we remember that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve street lighting requirements for Daisy Lane Estates and send to National Grid. Locations of seven 14-foot post-top pole, top LED luminaries are shown on the approved subdivision plan. The billing for these lights shall be established in the name of the developer until the town of East Bridgewater accepts the street as a public way or until it's accepted by the Residential Development Association. Upon acceptance and by request to National Grid, the company will process the billing change.
Second.
Any discussion? This has all been passed through the planning board and have approved it before we're sent down. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a request to, I make a motion to approve the request from Chuck Haran of East Bridgewater Quanis Club for the use of the town common to display American flags for two weeks to honor veterans, field of flags, October 30th, 2021 to November 13th, 2021.
Second.
Discussion. Again, this has been, this is probably the course of 10 years now anyhow.
Yeah.
And it's great to see these flags up there, they're illuminated at night when you drive by the common. It's, it's great. It's, it's another way to think of, you know, our military people that have served and are still serving overseas. It's just great to see. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the request from SPS Inc. Doing Businesses Fritas for a one-day liquor license located at center at Satchem Rock for a bridal shower on September 11th, 2021 from 2:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m.
Second.
And this has all been approved by the police and fire and so on. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the request from Tony Maciel of PAC 28 Cub Scouts for the use of the town common for a PAC 28 recruiting event on September 19th, 2021 from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is it for action items.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome.
Mr. Purcell, town administrator, report.
None tonight, Mr. Chairman.
You may have to make one up.
You sure?
You don't have to encourage me to talk, to speak, Mr. Chairman, so.
I, I, and I try not to, but in this case, I may.
Dare not.
Is there anything that you'd like to pass on to the public that, you know, you're working on or tell them how you run 4.1 miles every other day or...
You do?
Through the woods.
Yeah, well, I, I'm reaching. I reveal, yeah, I reveal that to you, Mr. Chairman, but...
Now it's the whole, our millions of viewers.
I envy you for doing that.
You do what?
I envy you.
Oh, well, I, you know, believe it or not, I know it's non-business related, but I feel lucky every time I do it. You know, at my age, to be able to, you know, to do that is a, you know, not everyone is so lucky.
It's true, 'cause the next step is the pickleball court.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to have a brace before you start.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I had two.
Thank you, Madam.
I had two falls this year of my own, but I didn't get injured.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Lee, announcements?
I have a few. I want to remind residents of the annual 9/11 memorial service beside Town Hall at 8:45 a.m. Also, East Bridgewater residents will have access to six household hazardous waste collection events this fall. They would have to register for these events, and the link is available on the town's website and the DPW's website. The first event will be on September 11 from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Gordon Middle School, 435 Central Street. I think that's it. And the remaining events will be out of town.
Okay, thank you. More discussions?
Might as well start off. Sure, yeah. So first, I wanted to thank the Rec Department for the event they had out here this past, two weekends ago, actually. Sadie, it was the first event in a long time. It was very successful. They had, I'd say, somewhere close to 300 or 400 people come in throughout the day. It was a little longer. You know, there's a learning curve here, obviously. The five hours in the heat, as Carol just discussed, were trying, but the event, I think, was something that the town thoroughly enjoyed. We had saw a lot of activity from the youth. They came out and supported it very well. The groups were great. The food trucks did wonderfully. All three of them said they sold out of merchandise that day.
Great. Wow, fantastic.
You know, PJ Fury as the chair and really Teresa McNulty as the co. They really got together and got the rest of the board to put on an event, I think, that hopefully will be annual and will bring more people out as it grows. That board is, as I've said for a while, needs to start to grow. And I think this is the first step to that. DPW, the East Bridgewater Police, the Fire, they all participated as well. They did very well throughout the day, as well as they donated their time. And that was, I thought, was an indication of this town, again, coming together for the first time in a long time. I just wanted to say thank you to all those people that came out and supported it in the community. And a big thank you to the Rec Department, who are starting to get those initiatives that have been forcing down their throat here for a year to get them going.
And give yourself a pat on the back, too, because you did push them. They told me individually.
Yeah, I'm sure they did.
And you did a great job. It was great. It was warm, but, you know, everything was going on at the same time. And the kids were having a great time. It was fun. And a lot of the adults, too.
Yeah.
I'm glad the food trucks worked. That's good. It's good to have something else coming in.
Yep, see those. Even the groups that are out singing, they, you know, they, first time in a long time, got to chat with Dale a little bit as well. And, you know, he's just kind of getting back in the swing of things again, too. But a lot of them said the same thing. They've been seeing more and more events outside like this, and it's helping them to start to see the future a little rosier than it's been in the last year and a half or so.
And the search group was out there and, you know, helping around, which, again, they always do when they're asked for something. So it was, it was tremendous day.
That was great.
Last thing I have is I wanted to thank Jim, as well as Melissa, for inviting me to sit with the investment firm. We sat with them last Thursday, Wednesday? I'm not sure what day it was.
Thursday, yes.
Thursday, yeah. And got a very good review on where the town's finances are. They talked a little bit about the petition that we had put through the act. And they're working on actually giving us some solid numbers on what we can do in the future and hopefully see some returns, a little bit better returns. They're restricted in a lot of ways. It was more of an education for me than anything else, to sit and listen to them tell us about some of the funds that we have, some of the trusts that have been around forever, from the library and school mostly. I walked away very happy with the information that was given to us. And I think over the course of the next month or so, I think they'll do a lot to give us more information. And they did have these packets. I think Jim grabbed a couple extras. If you guys want to take a look at it, you'll see some of the, like I said, some of the trusts that have been around for some of these people. I'm like, I haven't seen this person in, you know, 100 years here. So. But it was, again, it was very informative. And thank you to both of you for including me in on that meeting. It gave to open up a lot of avenues that I wasn't aware of. And I hope that going forward, we'll be able to continue to work with them and learn a little bit more, get ourselves educated a little bit more as well.
And again, thank you, Melissa, for everything you put into that.
Mr. Chairman, there may be, just as far as a heads-up goes, we have a modest amount of capital that we can commit to these investment opportunities. We're looking at moving some additional money, which is, idling would be a harsh term, but we have, undesignated right now, a sum of money that, you know, in excess of $1 million that we could probably, you know, move into the same investment vehicles. The consultants are examining whether or not we have the executive authority, and that would be in the Office of the Treasurer, to move those funds into this investment vehicle, or if a, and here's why I brought it up, if a town meeting warrant article would be necessary at the November meeting to make that same shift. Okay? I think the feeling is, we probably have the executive authority now, but in case we don't, I've just marked up my, you know, my November 22 warrant, you know, put a placeholder in for that. So you may or may not see an article on this topic for November 22. And I so advised the FinCom Chair today.
That's it?
Well, I haven't been around East Bridgewater much the last month, between Iceland for my daughter's wedding and then the Cape. But when I was here, I was able to go to Busy Bee for Denise Foster Day, which was a really fun experience. My daughter was a student there back before kindergarten, so it was nice to see all the kids come back and wish her well. And she was escorted off in a fire truck for the day. I'm not sure how those connections happened, but such as it was. It was a great day celebrating all her years at Busy Bee. And I thought she was retiring, but she's not retiring. They just wanted to do something special for her. So that was, that was nice to see.
And what I found amazing is they kept it quiet.
Yes, she didn't know.
Didn't know anything about it until that morning.
She did not know.
How do you do that in East Bridgewater?
Especially with all those kids involved. So, yeah, but that's about it for me.
Okay. Just a quick reminder, the Finance Committee is getting back in together starting September 7. There are two vacancies for the Finance Committee. We have one applicant that has submitted a request to be appointed. We're still looking for another person on the Finance Committee. It's a great position. It gives an individual a lot of knowledge of what really happens, you know, to the money in East Bridgewater. And, you know, please think about it and just send a letter and request it to be appointed so we can get a full staff there before we move into our special time meeting.
Can we recess?
Yes.
Until we have our appointment?
I'll make a motion we recess until, you know, Ernie Lynch from Community Paragon Associates comes in to give us an update on the permanent training allowance, since Jim will consider staying with us.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We will be returning. It's now 7:20. We are resuming our meeting of today and welcoming Ernie Lynch from Community Paragon Associates to give us an update on our search for a new town administrator. Mr. Lynch?
Good evening. Happy to be here with you tonight. I have information regarding the candidates that we are bringing forward to you. Let me just give you, though, a little bit of background about the search process that we utilized and what the results were of that process. As you know, we came to meet with all of you. I can't recall the date, but I should have written that one down. Didn't even think to do that. But we spent time speaking with each one of you. And we spent, I think, about an hour, maybe a little bit more, talking to the department heads. And there was some follow-up with some of the other, with some of the other department heads after that meeting. And we used that to generate the position statement, the position profile, that we use to market the position. We advertised the position at the Massachusetts Municipal Association. We also advertised through the International City and County Management Association, the emerging government, local government leaders organization, a new organization of younger professionals looking to enter into the municipal world. We distributed it to a number of the universities and colleges that have alumni organizations associated with the public administration programs. And we distributed it to all of the members of the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association, as well as our own database of candidates that have contacted us, looking for opportunities here in the Commonwealth. And then did some direct outreach to a number of candidates in the area. As a result of that, we received about 19, we received exactly 19 applicants for this position. That's a, probably a little bit lower, I think, than we had last time. But as I think we explained at the time of the meeting with you, it still remains a very difficult market for municipal administrators. There's more communities looking for new managers than there have ever been over the last five years. Probably somewhere in the vicinity of 60% to 70% of the municipalities here in Massachusetts have turned over their managers. So people are still in contracts in most cases, or still working at the beginning of their careers in those communities, or they're at the tail end. Those that haven't left are at the tail end of their time in the municipal world. And so obviously, they're not going to be out looking for new positions. So it is still very much a seller's market in terms of municipal administrators. We received, as I say, 19. I have to tell you, I was very pleased to have five, arguably six outstanding candidates. People that were town administrators in other communities, or assistant administrators in communities, or in one case, we had a DPW director from a very large community that has looked at other administrator positions. That was, you know, all these people we thought would be an outstanding fit. Unfortunately, circumstances over the last several days, culminating in Saturday's phone call that I received, four of those candidates withdrew. The reason had nothing to do with East Bridgewater. It had to do with their current positions. In one case, the, an assistant that was very interested in East Bridgewater learned that the administrator in their community was leaving. There was now an opportunity. In another case, there was an assistant administrator that was being given the opportunity to serve in a major finance role in a very large community and made the decision to try to continue to pursue that. The DPW director suddenly found out that the federal government was going to be giving him millions of dollars to complete projects that he'd been working on for a number of years, and he wanted to see that through to completion. And then another administrator made, administrator made the decision to stay where he was because he was working with his board on a new set of strategic goals and didn't feel that now was the time for him to leave that particular community. Now, that's what we lost. I do have, let me... How's that? Is that a good way to start?
Give us the good news.
Thank you. We still have, we do have two outstanding candidates that I had basically, you know, sort of at the top of our list when we went through the first set of candidates coming in. Again, we had six, five or six outstanding. These two were in the top group of that, and I think they would be an excellent fit for East Bridgewater. They come highly recommended, and I think they check all the boxes as to the type of person that you're looking for here in East Bridgewater to move forward on all of your initiatives and work with the people within the organization. They're highly collaborative. They're highly ethical. And they're highly skilled. The first is Louise Miller. Louise is currently the town administrator in Wayland. She's been there for three years. And she is a resident of Needham. By the way, these are, just so you see, you understand why we do this, these are public documents, and so any personal information is redacted for the public. Obviously, we can provide you with that information, but until someone becomes an employee, this information is supposed to remain confidential. But she isn't, we can tell you that she's a resident of Needham. She's interested in making a change. She feels that she's completed most of what she wanted to complete within the town of Wayland, and she's now looking for a community that she can really dig into and help with their issues. In this case, East Bridgewater's issues. She's accomplished a great deal while she's been there. Wayland has a somewhat fragmented form of government that she's been working through and has had some success in working with the board there to move a number of initiatives forward in terms of its organization. But she's also, as you can see, done a number of good work in various areas of municipal administration, including economic development, finances. She's moved them from a AAA with a negative outlook to a AAA with a stable outlook. She has certainly dealt with the COVID situation, some good personnel experiences, particularly with the collective bargaining that she's done, and a number of other major initiatives within the town of Wayland. Prior to that, she served as the Budget Manager for the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority. As you know, the MWRA is responsible for major water and sewer projects across the area surrounding Boston. And she was in charge of the budget for the MWRA for a period of time. And prior to that, she was with the city of Medford as the Chief Budget Officer, Chief Procurement Officer, and also had certain personnel responsibilities when she was there. She, and then just to fill this out a bit, she also served in the town of Needham as, within the Public Works Department, as a supervisor of administrative services, essentially the business manager. And she took that position soon after leaving her legal background. She is an attorney, and... She is an attorney and served, had been employed by a couple of large firms before deciding to make a change in her career and go into municipal government. As I said, she's a lawyer. She has a bachelor's degree from Massachusetts Institute of Technology in mathematics. She has a law degree from Boston University. And she has a master's degree in liberal arts with a concentration in classical civilizations from Harvard University. So obviously, very outstanding educational pedigree. But most importantly for us, she comes with outstanding references from the town of Wayland, from selectmen there, mayor, former mayor of Medford, an assistant town manager from another community, a city solicitor in Medford, and a member of the Needham Board of Selectmen. So she is our first candidate. I allow you to have an opportunity to review all of what we gained from her references. The second candidate is a little bit of a different background. I'm sorry.
One second.
Sure.
Explain fragmented government in Wayland.
It's a very, when you think of a community side of Wayland, generally, you would think of it as being more hierarchical. It's very, you know, for instance, the public works function has been, was separated out to a board of public works. Number of elected positions, number of boards or committees that had certain responsibilities over their areas. So it's very, it's difficult in those, there isn't necessarily executive authority over the entire operation by either the board or the administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Second candidate is Patrick Shield. Patrick lives in Walpole, where he serves as the assistant town administrator and has served in that capacity for three and a half years. Again, comes highly recommended. You'll see when we get, you'll take a look at his references. As the assistant town administrator, I will tell you that the town administrator of Walpole has done an outstanding job of mentoring a number of people that have served on his team that have moved on to town administrative positions in other communities. Just right next door to you here, the town of Plimpton. The town administrator there had served under that town manager. The current town administrator or the recently appointed town administrator of Hudson went through the Walpole system, if you will. Patrick is no exception to that. He's been given a wide portfolio of responsibilities, overseeing HR, capital projects, special projects, dealing with, you know, purchasing. He has his hands in all aspects of town administration. There are some assistant town administrators that come in with smaller portfolios. He has a very wide portfolio in his areas of responsibilities. Prior to serving as town administrator, he was the recreation director for the town. But he also wore a number of other hats while serving in that capacity, which essentially made him a de facto assistant town administrator. So while serving as recreation director, he also was the interim community development director for over a year. He also served as the interim council on aging director for a number of months. So again, had the opportunity to learn all aspects of the town operation in that capacity. Prior to that, he worked for, in the Massachusetts Senate, as a district director for a state senator. He also had served for a period of time on the town of Walpole School Committee as well as being a town meeting member. They have a representative town meeting there. He has a bachelor's degree in political science from UMass Boston and a master's degree in public affairs and public administration from UMass Boston. And he is certified in terms of public procurement, as is Louise. So both of them come, again, with the references that we provided there. We have the current town administrator in Walpole that spoke on his behalf as well as the current school superintendent, the former Walpole police chief. We are currently, Community Paradigm is currently working with the town of Walpole to hire a new police chief. So this is the former police chief. A labor attorney here in Massachusetts as well as a Massachusetts state representative. In all cases, one of the areas that we were focusing in on was not just their skills and what they had accomplished, but we were also interested in hearing from them as to their relationship with the department heads as well as how they interact with the public and their overall temperament and ethics. And they all, they both came highly recommended in each one of those areas. So those are the two candidates that we would like you to interview. We think you will find them to be very impressive, and they will be able to address any of your questions. So.
Again, on paper, you know, they're both very, very impressive. You know, with a quick look through, it'll be interesting to see how we work when we set up the interviews. Also, they both are working currently, so to set up an interview, we would have to give them enough notice.
Right. I think we're, I think we were shooting for the
September 8th. Yes.
So obviously, I wanted to come in tonight to do this, and now we'll nail down that date for them.
Okay. What time do we want to do it?
I'm available anytime you need me.
I don't even know what the date is. What's the?
A week from Wednesday.
Wednesday. Right.
Yeah, that's fine. Whatever you want to do.
And Mr. Chairman, we did, you and I spoke earlier today about your next Board of Selectmen meeting. That is, not for interview purposes, but your regularly scheduled, your first regularly scheduled September meeting is Monday, the 13th. You're doing interviews on the 8th. You had expressed on numerous occasions that you'd like about a week's time between the actual interviews and your deliberations and vote on a candidate. So you discussed, you raised the possibility of Wednesday, the 15th, instead of Monday, the 13th.
Just to give us enough time to do our own, you know. And again, when we do these interviews, you know, I would request that all our department heads and other people in the town, you know, if you can, join us here for the interviews. If not, please, you know, watch them. And we will be looking especially for our department heads and the people in the buildings. We need feedback from you people. You people are the ones that will be working with these, one of these people, hopefully, you know, day in and day out. You know, the board, you know, do work with them, but you people have to tell us if you have any further questions that we need, stuff like that. After we get through our questions and discussions, you know, this is what we're looking for. You know, your input, which we didn't have before, and it's something that we don't want to miss it again.
Mr. Chairman, the format you were talking about today, the format of those interviews, the Q and A is between the Board of Selectmen and the candidates. It's not an open forum for folks from the floor to, you know, to engage in that.
We can, you know, we can fit them all in here, but, you know, as you're saying, Jim, this is, it's an interview that we're, if people have questions after the interviews are over, they can come to the board and we'll see what we can do at that time. But it's definitely ours. We don't want to put any more pressure on these candidates than this board can do by themselves.
Right.
Carol, anything?
No, I think that timeframe sounds good.
I would like to move our meeting to the 15th.
That's fine with me.
Yep. So just a quick question. So obviously, putting these people there now, it's public information now that they're both applying for this job.
Yes.
What's the, being the first time that I've gone through this process? I've got some relationships in Needham, Wayland. I mean, am I able to ask, talk to people yet, or is it after the interview process?
All public now, so.
All right. All right. Great. That's all I needed to know.
And in terms of the interview process, what I will do over the course of the next couple few days is get you some draft questions that we can kind of consider. And there's two routes that we can, we can do this. And I'm flexible. We, you know, I think the last time through, we did it, basically, we, you know, I sat at the back of the room and listened to him. Happy to do that style again. What we have found in a number of other communities, though, we've been working with, and in some cases, they've asked for this. In other cases, we've, I've had this conversation and raised it. It's a little bit different direction, more of a facilitated dialogue, if you will, where we'll have topics, issues that we want to ask about, and I would serve as a facilitator to that so that it gives you the opportunity to sit back and listen and dig into their responses as opposed to staying on a script. And a number of communities have found that to be a more, to be more productive for them. You don't have to make a decision on that right now. I can walk in here that night. You can have the questions, and you can say, you know, we decided to sit back. We want you to sit out back there, or sit out there, or go home. But we can do it either way.
Is that an either or? Either or proposition, or can you hybrid that, or is it?
Well, you can.
The script is awkward. I mean, it really is. I remember sitting here, and later, we each had to ask the same question each, and it just.
Yeah, I was talking with Bernie about this before we came in.
You can't really, like, follow up with anything.
And one of the things is, you ask a question, and I have the next question. Well, that's already been answered. Your question brought the answer to the next couple of questions.
Right, right. And then you're like, well, now what do we do?
Now you lost.
Right.
Right. Because you have to ask the same questions each time.
We can still have a list of questions if they don't get answered during the interview. We can come up with them after that.
Exactly. What we do is generally, you know, so we'll talk about financial management. That will be a topic. And I'll, I'll ask a question, a free-form question to them about their financial management experience. And their response will probably create some new questions for you, the follow-up questions that you will then ask. Now, one of the questions that, when you're talking about that, this is the classic example for me. When you're talking about financial management and how you make do with less, how you continue to provide services when times are tight. Many of the candidates in these interviews will start to wander into the area of grants. Well, that's probably another question that someone has, with your grants experience. They're going to talk about that, so let's dig into that. In that way, we can have a dialogue around that. Or they'll start talking about economic development as a way to bring new revenue in to address budgetary issues. And that will take off, take us down the road of talking about economic development. At the end of it all, so when we're talking about economic development, that may, I'm going to take a shot in the dark here, Peter, that's going to make you start talking about the sewer project. And now we're going to start talking about, you're going to want to know about what they've done as far as economic development for infrastructure, with infrastructure. And off we go. But at the end of it all, if there's anything that's been missed, there's a catch-all at the end. And, you know, that's when, you know, David will start asking some other questions that, you know, weren't on that list or didn't somehow missed it. They didn't respond, and that's where we want to do that. So again, it's not so much, I just, sort of, in some respects, there was another community that was working with us that it was a situation where they didn't feel they wanted to do it quite as formally, so they asked me to do this. And it became, it was so successful, they started offering it up as a possibility. And as I thought about it, when I was, you know, in my experience of hiring people through, over the last 30 or 40 years, I didn't, I never sat down with a set of questions and asked it. I sat down in a chair across from them.
You had a conversation.
And you had a conversation.
Yeah.
You asked about those things that you wanted to talk about, but you had a conversation. You got a chance to really know the people as opposed to scripted questions that they're going to know in advance, and they're going to have set answers for.
Initially, it sounds great.
Off the cuff, I really kind of liked the idea, only because it is really awkward doing it the other way. And you don't get a real sense of the end, and not that we want to, like, offer a soft shoe option, but they're going to be more comfortable with you because they already know you. That might enable a little bit more of who they really are to shine through as opposed to us. I mean, I remember one of the candidates we interviewed last time, and he was so nervous. You know, and so it was harder to really assess, you know, what he could or couldn't do because he was just, he was just a bundle of nerves. And maybe with you facilitating it more, that might allay some of that.
And, but having said that, if there is something you want to dig into that you all, that each of you, one, you can do it yourself, or if you call me, email me or whatever, that night, say, I really want to, I want to understand this, then I can be, there was another community, I'll just be blunt. There was another community where there was a candidate that they were familiar with. They wanted me to ask some tough questions. So I did, and I was pretty firm with those questions. So I can, I can do that as well. But so comfort as well as dig into this for us, I can do that as well.
Yeah, you can be the heavy.
Exactly. They'll, they'll walk out and say, boy, Carol, David, and Peter are great. I don't know what came over him. Okay. I'll work on the questions. I'll get them out to you. And anything that's missing from those, or you want to jump in right now or as you think about it, just send it on, and we'll make sure that they get in there.
I have you on speed dial.
I know you do. I know you do. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks for that.
All right.
Anything? With that, I will.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.